83, the Buridi petition. Yeah, I'm asked, I'm being asked to read a procedural statement from the state's attorney's office. Before we begin each hearing, so here goes. Pursuant to the Illinois Attorney General's guidance to public bodies on the Open Meetings Act during COVID-19 pandemic dated July 2, 2020, zoning board of appeals members may participate without being physically present in compliance with the established provisions. I am calling the meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. A physical quorum of the members is not present. However, pursuant to section seven sub E of the Open Meetings Act, members are permitted to attend remotely. Either one member of the board, the chief administrative officer, or chief legal counsel are physically present at the meeting location. In-person attendance and public comments are allowed, subject to attendance limitations required to ensure the health and safety of those who attend. So with that, we'll proceed. I'll recognize counsel. Our setup is the same, so if you want to take the podium and continue your statement. I know that we have a number of new exhibits, so. Here, introduce them however you like.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Lyman Thiemann, I'm the attorney for Leonard McHenry. And I was here at the last meeting. The folks that are with me this evening on our end, part of our project, were all sworn in last time. I don't know if you want to swear everybody again, or if that's.
No, just to save, we have this hour limitation, so to save even a minute, we'll just assume that you're all still under oath.
Okay, and we will, we will be having two people that are on Zoom tonight that have not been sworn in. So when we get to them, we'll swear, we can swear them in at that time. As you indicated, we have submitted some additional exhibits. Some are revisions and some are new materials that have been distributed. I assumed all of the members of the planning and zoning commission. And I'd like to go back, a couple of these were revised, kind of to clarify the images that were on documents that were submitted to you last time. I know a couple of them, particularly the site plan was difficult to read. So we had it, we had it redrawn and there is a slight modification to the site plan. And I'll have your engineer talk about, but I'd like to have her start out with our engineer, go through the drawings that he's brought with this evening, all of which I believe have been submitted to you. If we come across one that has not been, let us know and we'll be happy to get additional copies over to you. But I believe all of them have been submitted. So with that, I'll call upon Brian Hertz to come up and go through the site plan, again, showing the modification that we made and going through some of the other drawings that he has here this evening.
All right, let's make sure we're all talking about the same document because we have six or eight new, new exhibits.
Yeah, the first, first one you have up there, Brian, is what?
I have several that are preliminary site plan. I have three, the top three in my stack are Mark's preliminary site plan. Does that mean I have three copies of the same thing?
One has aerial photo, one does not.
Okay. So today is Jan 7. Let's take this first one, which appears to be a traditional site plan as Jan 7 exhibit one.
Okay, go right ahead. Sure. So the main revision on this plan was down at the truck fueling area. If you have the other plan or you remember, the truck fueling lanes were located on the, the north side where we have the parking spaces now shown. So we flipped the parking that was being provided from that south side up to the north to get it closer to the store. And then we took the truck fueling and went to the south. The main thing that did was it eliminated crossover traffic coming in. So when a truck would come in, they can, they can just follow that loop around and come right back out now. So it'll, it's cleaner. So the traffic movements are cleaner with this particular layout.
Okay, so that's a good description of the changes. Can you walk us through on the site plan? Just show us how the truck circulation now works.
Sure. So further into the packet, there was a truck turning movement exhibit.
All right, what do you want that to be? Jan 7-2 or? Counsel, how do you want to mark these? Jan 7-2 is the, what's called turning exhibit.
Okay, so on the turning exhibit, there's, there's several different movements and they're all identified by number. So the first one is number 10 in the list. At about the middle of the page, we get passenger car design vehicle, going through the car wash pay stations and exiting back out to the site. So that's showing that the car would come in from the right in, right out on Route 83, continue north through the pay stations. And then it would maneuver over to the car wash building, the tunnel, come through the tunnel, exit out. Then it can go back either out to the right in, right out to leave, or to continue south to the automobile fueling area. The next one we have is number 13, which is showing a passenger car, design vehicle maneuvering through the C-store drive-through. So you can see it in there entering the drive-through, extending or driving west, then turning south and then back east to approach the service window at the C-store. And then when they leave the drive-through, they could either exit the site back to the right in, right out, or they could get fuel and then go get a car wash. Okay, number 11 is a fuel tanker. So that one we're showing coming in off Route 83 into the full access, turning to the right, turning north, and then approaching the east side of the automobile fueling island to unload their fuel. So we show the underground storage tanks just east of the automobile fueling island there. Wow. So then when the tanker unloads fuel, he can continue north, make a U-turn and then come back out and down to the full access at Route 83. The next one is number eight, which is a full-size semi WB65 vehicle, coming in off of the full access of Route 83. And this showing the, the movement of the truck coming in, heading northwesterly and then making a U-turn to approach the truck fueling lanes. So we have three truck fueling positions there. So they could pick any one of the three. We showed the tightest turn there that they would have to maneuver. And then they could exit back out to Route 83. Number nine is basically showing that the truck has adequate area to make the right turn. If there's a truck waiting to turn left, they can turn to the right and still make that maneuver back out onto Route 83.
Route nine starts and ends on the sort of the lower corner here, correct? Where does it come into the property?
It would, it would come in the same way Route 8 would. You know, they would come in. I know, this is showing that once they leave the fueling area, they can make that right turn back out on Route 83. Okay. So that's, that's pretty much the truck turning exhibit. And you know, we had some cars on the north end that we showed also.
So if I'm the driver of a vehicle that is supposed to follow eight, nine, 10, 11, whatever, how do I know where I'm supposed to go? Or is it gonna, are there gonna be signs?
Yes, there'll be directional signage on the site, pavement striping arrows, things like that.
So it's gonna, there's gonna be internal signs that say cars this way, trucks that way, whatever?
Yeah, and even on the truck canopy, you know, they like to have those so that when they're, they're fueling, they're, they're facing back out to the highway. So that's why we want to have them loop back around, you know, rather than coming in. And then it would be the crossover movement again. So we want to keep the trucks along that north area and then make the turn to come back out to face the highway.
Okay. It's, it's very complicated to me, but if you say it works, I'll give this careful thought.
Yeah, the, the geometrics out here are actually a little larger than some of them that we've done in the past.
Done with this exhibit?
Yes.
You know, counsel, it seems like there's a lot of sort of subsections to your presentation. The circulation question is one that has been important to the board in past hearings. Would you, I don't know if there are any questions, but would you object if, if your presentation with respect to this piece is relatively complete? Would you object if we ask board questions now?
Oh, no, that's.
Are there any questions concerning this exhibit or the circulation issues generally from any member of the board? Mr. Schultz, do you have a question?
I do. Um, the one question that it doesn't seem to answer from this diagram is if I go to vacuum my car or I have an F-150 pickup truck and I go into those vacuuming lanes and then I finish vacuuming and then I go to get my car wash or my truck washed, that seems like a really tight turning radius from the way that you have us going into there to turn around to go into the wash area. And it seems to me that if somebody's trying to make that turn, if they're not in a really small car, they're gonna have to stop and kind of back up or make some kind of gerrymander thing. It's gonna block traffic moving through there. Can you address that?
Are you referring to, say, the south entrance into the car wash area? Like where the pay station lanes?
Right, but the, all of the, if I'm gonna vacuum my car, that's to the west of that, correct?
Right.
And the way, and the way that it had shown before, I don't know if that's still your thought, is that you would come in from the west side of those vacuum lanes and then drive through and then exit at the east side of those vacuum lanes. So then when you're making that, you know, you're going southbound to access where the pay stations are, to make that turnaround there seems to me to be pretty tight.
Yeah, I mean, it's a two, two-way road surrounding the pay stations. We have minimum 24 feet wide pavement in all directions from the, from the canopy for the stalls, I'd say. I mean, that radius there, we could definitely make that radius larger on that south island of the vacuum stalls. Is that what you're looking at there?
Um, where I'm looking at, like if you're coming southbound on 83 and you turn in to go, and you're gonna go and get a car wash.
Right.
Right, where there's the island that kind of separates the lanes for the pay station from the drive and the area to where the vehicles would be vacuuming out there inside of their car.
Okay, right about where number 10 on the turning movement, I think, is the radius.
Yes, right, right in that, if you drew a circle right in there, that's where I see there to be kind of a problematic thing. And where you might run into a safety issue where the person vacuumed his car, he's now trying to access, going to the pay station and there's somebody at the same time coming from the highway to go to the pay station. It doesn't seem like there's a smooth where you can just drive through. It seems like you're gonna have to stop and back up or maybe it's just, you know, if I saw it on actual space, I would see where you could do it.
Yeah, I think you could open up the radius there, make the radius larger and try to provide more room there.
Well, that would be something I think you should examine.
Okay, we will. Anything else from any other member concerning circulation? Yes? Tom?
Not as, not as much on circulation, but I mentioned before, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Route 83 right there is 50 miles an hour?
I believe so, yes.
It is.
A deceleration and acceleration lane is, I would think would be helpful with tractor trailers pulling in and out on a two-lane highway there, don't you?
Right, we're actually showing a right turn deceleration lane, the entire frontage of our site.
So we would. Okay, okay, I couldn't kind of quite see it on the print, but now I see what you're talking about. That's the only thing that I was worried about because a tractor trailer, it's gonna take quite a while to get up to 50 miles an hour.
Right, we have a right turn diesel lane for the right in, right out and then also for the full access. Correct.
Okay. Thank you, that was one of my big concerns last time.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rakim?
Yes, I think I can answer it, but when we go back to eight, the, the Route eight where the trucks come in, it only shows it going into one of the fueling sections. But I think it can go to all four, right? Or is there a problem because it's not shown on your diagram? Is there some obstruction?
No, no, we, we only showed the, the tightest turn that was.
Okay, all right. The other question, I want to go back to what one of the other commissioners just asked you. 10 coming in, when it comes in, it goes past the island, turns around and goes to one of these vacuuming stops. Is it possible that it goes around all the way and then hooks back onto 10 just where you see that then, where you see traffic coming in from the other side? Because then there would be no tight turn that Carl was referring to. It would almost be a circle.
Right, so you're saying, could they?
I'm just asking, I don't know what your plan is because I'm not really sure by looking at this that you expect them to come vacuum and then go back and hook back into the pay section area.
I think it varies, you know, from person to person. I, I don't know if it's half of them get a wash first and then they go to the vacuum spaces or, you know.
Because I can see if they're trying to hook back the way they came to the vacuum station, that there might be an issue.
A few pavement there for them to approach the pay stations if, after they leave the vacuum stalls, say on that west side of the back stalls, they can drive right there to the little intersection entrance and then go north into the pay station lanes.
That's what I was thinking, that they would come right around the whole island of vacuums and then hook into Route 10 from there by going round all the way.
And they certainly could do that, yes.
I mean, it's a thought because I, I don't know, I'm, I'm looking at a piece of paper in a Zoom meeting and I, I'm not quite sure that you and I both understand each other in this situation, but I hope I'm making myself clear and not causing more confusion.
Right, no, I follow what you're saying. The other question?
You see, where it, where it shows that truck at, on 10, just stopped or a vehicle on 10 stopped as it's heading out of the vacuum area, right there, if it, if it was able to turn and hook back into 10.
Yes, turn north.
Yeah, you may not have the issue that was being pointed out a little earlier.
Right, no, they, they certainly have room to make that turn there. You know, we just didn't show it doing that to try and keep the drawing somewhat clean.
Other questions? So my compliments to them. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Murphy? Question? Oh, you need this.
Yes, when you're feeling your, your gas pumps there, you only got 35 feet there. By the time the truck, a truck parks there with the hoses and everything, there isn't much space for anybody to really go out. And also, it looks like it'd be very tight for the truck to come up and go out of there. And then the truck's 52 feet long to come up and go back out of there.
Are you looking at the truck fueling down here or are you looking?
Looking at the gas station.
Yeah, see, at the gas station, we don't anticipate.
Would you please repeat this question so that?
Sure.
Summarize it?
Sure. So the question was about the space to the east of the automobile fueling island?
Right.
Showing 35 feet of width. And that's, that's actually shown better on the site plan drawing. So in that area that's east of the automobile fueling, there was concern about the, the space there for a truck leaving the pumps. Is that right?
Yeah, but when the, when the tanker's there, he's got hoses pulled out. So he's, he's over quite a ways, he's, he's right up against the curb.
Right.
Probably be 15 feet at least out. And that only gives about 20 feet for somebody to pull out of there. And most people are pulling ahead of where you show there anyway, at, at a station.
Right, right, so if, if a tanker's unloading, so the question is if a tanker's unloading fuel to the underground storage tanks, can a car have enough space to get in and out so it's not blocked?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, there is some room there on the drawing. The end island could be, could be tight for, for a car to exit out that east side of the automobile fueling. You know, they might have to back up and then, and then leave on, from the west side of the island.
They have a car behind them, so.
Right, if there's a car behind them, then.
Yeah, and you get a lot of these landscapers coming with a trailer and they pull ahead and they, they fill up their tractors and everything.
Right, well, you know, that's why we have the separated diesel truck fueling to the south down there where the, where the trucks.
So they're just talking about gas.
Right. Right.
That's all I have.
Well, I have to compliment the members of the board because your question suggests that you have a much better understanding of the circulation than I do. It seems to me, I can follow the proposed circulation of an, of any individual vehicle that comes to the site. I have no idea how it's gonna work with multiple kinds of vehicles making multiple decisions about various alternative paths and services, et cetera. It seems to me that you're gonna need a choreographer to sort of guide this traffic. So I have asked whether our staff could obtain a review of this from the transportation department to determine whether the transportation department thinks this works and can give us maybe a little more expert guidance. Is that, I don't want to put anybody to a great deal of work. Is that consistent with perhaps the wishes of the board?
Well, I agree. I didn't really overly understand it, that's why I didn't have any questions.
Okay, well, let's have the transportation department have a look at it and we'll all study it further individually. Great, thanks. What do you have for us next?
You know, at the last meeting, there was some questions about the parking and the reservoir spaces or the stacking. So we have added a summary table to our site plan drawing down the lower right corner. We've indicated the required parking based on the retail component, the restaurant and the car wash parking. So we're required 51 parking spaces. This plan provides for 51 parking spaces plus three handicap or ADA spaces for a total of 54. So we exceed the requirement on the parking. Then the reservoir spaces or the stacking, the restaurant requires five spaces and the car wash requires 15 spaces. So total of, says 18, that adds up to 20, though. We'll correct that. The proposed or provided restaurant spaces, we've actually got 14. Car wash, we've got 24. So we've got a total of 38. So we're exceeding that by 18 spaces. Um, moving on to, we had the question last time and we talked about it a little bit already. The underground storage tank locations, those are shown on the site plan now. So the automobile underground storage tanks are located to the east of the automobile fueling canopy towards the south end. And then we have another tank immediately north of the truck fueling island also. Can't think of any other questions that were brought up related to the site plan. Oh, the lighting, we show, we've got a, a lighting plan drawing in here. We probably need to identify that as its own exhibit.
Oh, preliminary lighting plan?
Correct.
So that's Jan 7-3? Exhibit 3?
Yeah.
So this is essentially, I mean, this was my fault last time because I couldn't figure out where the light bulbs were and you've, well, it looks a lot clearer now. Did you make any changes or is it just a clarification?
It's just clarification. We do show, you know, the, the double-headed fixtures with the two black squares. And then there's a few that are a single fixture for the area lighting. We've got a light pole detail. It's pretty standard 20-foot tall poles with a two-foot concrete base. Orange square poles that they use on these LED fixtures. So yeah, that's the lighting plan. We're showing the canopy lighting is indicated on here as well. So there's lighting under the vacuum canopies, lighting under the car wash pay station canopy for people to be able to see, under the automobile fueling canopy, obviously, and the truck fueling canopy.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question whenever you would permit me.
Is it regarding lighting?
Yes.
Fine, go right ahead.
All right. Counsel, I was looking at, and, and the reason why I don't refer to you by name, I'm not sure how to pronounce it and I don't want to murder your name. But when I looked at this drawing, there seemed to be lights indicated, and I may be wrong, There seemed to be lights indicated, and I may be wrong. By the letters A, B, C, and D. Could you please help me understand what is meant by those, what are what are the differences? Because in specific areas, it says pole, typical pole, and that is at the south. East corner of the property. And then there's another one near the trucks. Where the truck is supposed to turn, but it doesn't say pole. And and those are Bs.
Right, so the letter does.
But what what is meant by A? C and D, what are those poles or not poles, what are they?
Sure, sure, the letter designations correlate with the photometric plan. So if we go back to the photometric plan drawing. There identified A, B, C, and D on that.
Okay, but these are on poles or are they not on poles?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the area lights are on poles. Right?
Okay.
Not on poles or the canopy lights, they fit up underneath.
Yeah, I I was confused by. That and then. The canopy lights, are they recessed or are they? Protecting the light from flowing out from under the canopy i- into the. Rest of the night sky or what?
Right, they're all LED fixtures, they're they're flat recessed fixtures under the canopy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Counsel.
We have A, B, C, and D, we have to go to the photometric plan to get that code, can I ask? So that as we study these exhibits further independently. Can I ask that we? You just tell us what A, B, C, D means right now so we don't have to go back and forth and we can each indicate on our. Lighting plan.
Sure.
The code, so what's A?
A is a single fixture. It is the canopy light. So it's the.
Excuse me, what is it?
It's the fixture canopy lighting underneath the canopies.
Okay.
Go right ahead, just run down the list.
Sure, B. B is a. Double fixture, so you got the two fixtures at ninety degrees mounted on a area pole. C. Is another double fixture, but they are. Opposite of each other, they're a hundred eighty degrees difference. On a pole, yes. D is a single area light. Fix your.
Are all the poles the same height?
Yes.
What's the height?
Twenty feet plus the base.
Do we, I I understand it's important to you for your general plan, but in terms of getting a general understanding of the photometrics and the lighting. Do I care really whether the double fixture is a hundred eighty degree facing or? Does it make any difference to me if it's a double pole fixture on a twenty foot, I mean, a double fixture on a twenty foot pole or? A double fixture of different style on a twenty foot pole, does it make any difference to me?
No, probably not, the only difference is that they use the ninety degree mount when it's located along the. You know, outside edges of the driveway, for example, on the truck fueling, you can see it there probably best.
For the sake of reflection?
Yeah, for for cutoff.
Oh, oh, okay. Is that understandable? To the?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Right. Okay, next case.
I don't know if I have much else on the site plan drawing. Maybe we want to move on to. Traffic or landscaping.
It's your call. How about landscaping? It's a deal. We're on landscaping.
What about the sign, Mr. Chairman, will that go with the lights?
The what?
The sign, the monument sign that they want to put up, does which is going to be lit, is that going to be discussed with the lighting or are we going to discuss that separately?
You know, it's kind of a general site plan question and we're on the site plan at all times, so if you want to ask that question, go ahead.
Well, I maybe Counsel can talk about the monument sign that you want to put up and. Given us a very nice drawing. And it is a fairly large sign, it would appear that you only want to have one sign for the entire property, is that correct?
Is that going to be this exhibit? Yes, I'm Scott, I'm the architect of the project. Yes, we're asking for one monument sign, we're actually allowed two because we're over six hundred feet. But we prefer to have one sign. And since it's a gas station, we are unique in the fact that because we have pricing on our monument sign along with identification for ourselves on our two potential tenants. Our sign's actually larger with our price price index included on the sign, so we're trying to take two signs, combine them together. Into one sign. And make it a more efficient sign that can contain all the information in one sign.
All right, do we have an exhibit for this? Their drawings were provided for the signage and I think there were.
It's Van Bruggen that I got today in my package.
Correct, well, I'm trying to get them to identify.
Yeah, so we have, I believe it's eight eight sign. Drawings that include the monument sign, the building signs and the canopy signs.
So we'll take this as January seventh, group exhibit four. And seven, group four, consisting of. Three, four, how many pages is it?
I think it's eight.
Eight pages. Great, thanks, walk us through these exhibits while we're on sign.
So the monument sign is the primary sign. We will have a. Masonry base to this that'll match the buildings, it'll be using the same type of masonry, that's indicated on the monument sign, so we'll have stone at the bottom and a brick on the sides. Again, we're asking for one double sided sign that'll indicate, of course, gas and wash are two tenants. And then of course include. The price menus for our gasoline, which is very customary and standard for gas stations, as well as we will have electronic reader board, which of course will conform with the requirements of the county. In regards to how it operates.
The other thing, sorry, I'm sorry.
Question?
The other thing is, yes, it's not shown on the site plan. So, I I mean, since as Mr. Chairman said last time, you know. You have to stick to your site plan and you have not shown where it is going to be unless this little straight line. A little rectangle just south of the. Bioswale near the north, right in, right out access to the property. And thus that's where it's supposed to be, but it doesn't indicate that on your plan. So my my point is, I I have two questions about this, number one.
Let's get clarification on the site plan.
So it is indicated on the site plan is on nor it's on the north side of the north driveway, the right in, right out driveway. It's indicated. And you'll see that it says monument sign.
Well, I'm probably looking at the wrong piece of paper, oh, yeah, I see it. I see it. I got it, so is that within the? There's no indication about the setback, is that in the right? Do you meet the requirements of the setback?
I I would have to check that, but that that was our intent, yes.
And does your sign meet the requirements, the necessary requirements in size?
Well, actually, no, it doesn't, the the code requires the sign be fifty square feet on each side, we are allowed two signs. So we tried to combine them together, we are slightly over that. Our area on this is a hundred and seven square feet on each side. So we are over on the size of the sign for the monument.
So, Mr. Chairman, do we need to have them ask for a variance or how does that work?
Well, it's a conditional use, so we need an enumerated exception. With respect to that issue.
Okay.
So it's not technically a variation in a conditional use, it's called an exception, am I on target here?
Right. Right.
So we we need an exception with respect to both location. And size. Height and et cetera of the sign. It's a simple matter to, well, I don't know if it's simple. But it seems to me the petition needs to be. Amended and then republished.
That's what I was wondering.
Okay, so let's go ahead, anything else on? Well, you were.
No, I don't have anything else, thank you very much.
All right, I asked the witness to go through this exhibit and tell us. We got eight pages of sign and I'd like to go through each page. An explanation of what the particular exhibit is supposed to tell us.
Okay, so that was the monument sign. We also have building signage, so there's one page that shows. The retail store, it shows the front and the back of the retail store. We are showing. Duncan's signage and we're giving indication indication of the signage on the front of the store, we're showing those areas. We, with the exception of the future food service, we comply with the size of the signs that are allowed. The future food sign would require a variation for an approval, but the other three signs are within the limits. We also have some signage on the sides of the building, this is more specialized signage for one of our tenants Dunkin' Donuts for their drive through. So we're giving indications of the size of that signage, now this signage does not face the street, but is is something that we try to customarily provide our our tenant with. We also have elevations of the car wash signage with indications of the size of those signs. The, I believe, the size of the sign that faces the street is within the allowed limit. We are proposing to put signs on the ends of the building as well. Then as with any gasoline station, there's always signage on the canopy systems themselves, some of that is. Identification signs, some of those directional signs. On the main gasoline canopy, which is a long canopy across the the front of this site plan, we have. Proposed signings on the front and on the ends for gas and wash, our name, as well as we are again trying to identify our primary tenant, which is Dunkin' Donuts. We have other canopies on the lot, we have the truck fueling area. The truck, we, when you come in, as Brian was describing to earlier, was as the trucks pull in, they'll see directly in front of them, the truck. Canopy with with trucks and and a truck sign is right on the the canopy itself.
Okay. I consider this. I'll ask concurrence from the staff. With the exception of the monument sign, which has issues of location, size, shape, height, et cetera. I consider the rest of this to be sort of informational generally. Because there's been no request for square footage deviation, et cetera, so. I get it, you're going to. Guide your customers to the difference between a car wash and a donut by telling them which building is which. But that is all just generally informational. My, are there any restrictions beyond this that I need to be aware of? No, there aren't, so I think I guess I'm right. Unless there's some interest on this general information with respect to. Wall signs, then let's move on to the next. Area.
Want to go back to landscaping?
Landscaping is good.
Well, our landscaping consultant. Is on the phone here remotely. So if we have questions, we can. Address those to her.
Hi, everybody, my name's Liz Defoe, sorry.
Liz, could you, I forgot who's on from KLOA, but could both of you be sworn in now?
Would you raise your right hands? You solemnly swear firm the testimony about to give this class now at hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God. Yes, I do.
You.
Before you start your presentation. Again, this may be somewhat informational. The interior landscape requirements according to what you've submitted is this landscape plan, which will mark as Jan seven, exhibit five.
Sorry. Um, yes, we do meet all the requirements.
And what's your percentage for interior landscaping?
We we do have. Everything broken down on the third page of the landscape plan, there is a chart. And I believe the interior. Lot landscaping, there are nine islands. And we have and we've provided eleven eleven shade trees, so.
I apologize for that interruption, go ahead with your presentation.
Yeah, so I was just saying that on page three of the landscape plan, we've broken down the requirements for the entire site. And. So for each area, the north property line, western, southern, and then the required parking lot landscaping. We've shown the required number of points as well as how many we are proposing and how that's being broken down between shade trees. Evergreens, ornamentals and shrubs. And we've shown the numbers on here and how many points. And so in all the cases, we are meeting the required number of of points. For each of those areas and then those trees are shown on page one and one point O and one point one, the layout. And I also wanted to point out that along the western. Property line, we have shifted. The the site so that we are ma- saving the existing vegetation buffer along those edges, the south and then kind of the north edge of that L shape. And so we are still meeting all of the western property line requirements, but we have those inside that existing vegetation buffer.
Well, speaking for myself. Page three, the char- the requirements versus what's proposed is the critical bit of information. I don't propose to choose your trees or figure out where to go, but. This looks like an excellent plan. So a little bit of digester, but I think we have the information, are there any questions from the board about landscaping? I don't see any.
Not from me.
So. What must you want to say about landscaping? Oh, anything else you want to add about landscaping?
No.
Not me, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, after I say it's an excellent plan, I think you gave the right response. Okay. Again, we've got a little studying to do, but we'll have a look at the landscape plan. What's next? Traffic, you're talking about traffic, we have our traffic consultant on the line from KLOA. Okay. What do you have to offer us?
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
I'm Michael Wirthman with KLOA, thank you for having us tonight. As you know, the development's going to consist of a fuel center with fourteen passenger fueling positions as well as three commercial or diesel fueling position. A C store with a drive through. And a car wash. As you guys probably are aware of. The volume of new traffic generated by these uses will be reduced for a couple reasons. The first is the fact that. Car wash or not car washes, excuse me, gas stations, fuel centers. And fast food restaurants, particularly. gas stations, fuel centers, and fast-food restaurants, particularly coffee and donut stores, which is proposed here, generate a large percentage of their traffic, upwards of 60% to 70% from that traffic that's already on the roadway system that's passing the site. We refer to this as pass-by traffic. So people that are commuting from home to work or work from home, stop to fill up, stop to get their coffee. So it really reduces the volume of new traffic on the roadway system. In addition, we expect some interaction between the various uses. Someone will stop and get gas, and will also get a car wash. Excuse me, they may stop for gas and go to the Dunkin' Donuts. So we'll see a number of multipurpose trips to this fuel center. All of that helps to reduce the volume of new traffic on the roadway system. Access to the facility is to be provided, as you've seen, via right-in, right-out access drive at the north end of the site. This access drive will provide one inbound lane, one outbound lane, channelize to prohibit those left turns, to channelize them into right-turn movements. In addition, a separate right-turn lane will be provided on southbound Illinois 83, serving this access drive to move that slower-moving traffic out of the Illinois 83 through movements. On the south end of the site, you'll have a full access drive, provide one inbound lane and two outbound lanes, drive for a separate left and a separate right-turn lane. A separate right-turn lane, southbound right-turn lane, will also be provided at this access drive, as someone pointed out earlier, to get that slowing, slowie, slower, excuse me, moving truck traffic out of the 83 through traffic and into a separate lane. In addition, a separate left-turn lane is proposed to be provided in the median on 83. In addition, there is a curb cut within the median right now, across from this full access, but that needs to be widened a little larger so we can get the traffic out and to make that left turn. When you look at the capacity analysis in general, the roadway system does have sufficient capacity to accommodate the fuel center. There are some movements at Illinois 83 and 91st Street that are operating at lower levels of service. And as we all know, those left turns from the fuel center onto 83 during the peak periods will probably work at a lower level of service because they're just waiting for a gap in the traffic stream. That's pretty much a synopsis of the study, and we'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
So you have an exhibit that you presented us last time, which is called Traffic Impact Study. This is unique to this site, I presume?
Yes, we prepared a traffic impact study dated in November 30th, 2020. That is for this site.
And that is based on traffic studies at this site on prior dates? Could you direct us to the portion, the pages that, or just tell us when you visited the site to make any traffic counts you may have taken?
So, given the COVID pandemic, we had done previous counts at the intersection of 83 and 91st Street in April 25th, 2019. So we used those counts at that intersection, and then we conducted some new counts at 83 and Honeysuckle Rose Lane, because we didn't have those, as well as 83 with the right-in, right-out access drive to the McDonald's on the east side of 83. And then based on what we found in 2019, we balanced the count to make sure they represented normal or typical traffic conditions in the area.
Did you increase by any percentage to account for increased traffic, or not?
Yes, as we always do, an excellent question, Chairman, to account for other growth in the area. Just looking at that page, hold on one second. I apologize, I'm sitting in a parking lot in my car, so I'm not as efficient as usual. We increased the background growth by 5.5%, actually 5.4%.
Okay, so I always, when you have these multipurpose sites, I'm always confused as to what you model to when you draw your conclusions, because you've got a car wash, you've got diesel, you've got fueling stations, you've got a restaurant, so what do you model to when you have a site like that?
So if you look on Page 12, which shows our trip generation table, so what we did is, you're all familiar with the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the Trip Generation Manual, which is the bible for traffic engineers. It has all the surveys of all the different land uses. So we use the gasoline convenience store rates. There's actual rate for a fuel center with a convenience store. We use those rates. We also use the rate for the coffee donut shop with a drive-through window, generated traffic for that separately, generated the traffic for the fuel center and the convenience store separate, and also generated the traffic for the car wash separately. So we looked at each of the three categories based on those being individual uses, and then added those totals up, and that is the traffic that we assign to the roadway system.
Excellent.
And... Go ahead.
Seems to me that KLOA has done its usual good job here. Are there any questions about the traffic study from the board?
Not from me, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
No, this is a, this is an exhibit from the prior hearing, I believe it was marked. But that leads me to my next question, or my next point of order. We've got some substitute, like the site plan is now replaced. I'd like the council and whoever else needs to participate to meet with our staff and clean up, clean up our exhibits. We may be withdrawing some old exhibits from the first hearing and substituting. We have new exhibits from this hearing. So I'd like you guys to, either this evening after the hearing or at some point over the phone, whatever makes sense, try to clean up our exhibits. And then give us an exhibit log, because, again, I hope this is not my problem only, but I don't have all of the exhibits from the prior hearing marked correctly, so an exhibit log would, would help immeasurably.
Yeah, I was showing from the prior hearing, we had four exhibits that were marked. Site plan, survey, front range, photometrics. We never got to the, to any presentation or offline, we are in traffic study. That was not really introduced until last.
Okay, then let's take this as Jan. 7, Exhibit 6, the KLOA study. And I appreciate your pointing that out.
Then on the exhibit we introduced at the prior meeting, I can get together with staff and we can... The survey hasn't changed.
To the members of the board that can't hear this, there's just an exchange here about cleaning up the exhibits, but can I suggest that this be discussed with the staff, and then we take this exhibit log? All right, now, it's 7 o'clock. I need to close in a moment. I need to do two things before I close. I'd like to know whether this petitioner operates any similar facilities that we might visit to get some sense of how it all works. Do you have any other, either the petitioner, who will be the operator, the landowner, the witnesses, the experts, do any of you have a site that we could, you know, take a drive to?
Yeah, I mean, the most recent one that has just opened was Yorkville.
So if you've got, if you've got a couple, could you give us that?
Soft Trail, Soft Village.
All right, give us, submit that information. I don't want you to do this off the top of your head.
Okay.
Pick of the most similar sites, give the list to our staff. They'll set it forth to us in some kind of an email or something. Although mine doesn't work. Then the next thing I have to do, we need another public hearing. So we need a rep publication with respect to these sign issues. I presume, you know, you could avoid that by reducing size and location, et cetera, but I presume you've given a lot of thought to your monument sign, and you're kind of tied to the idea, so that means you need the exception to be published. New publication, new public hearing. Is that your wish? If it is, I can tell you that January 28th is open for the next public hearing.
If it's just a matter of amending our application that we previously submitted, yeah, the January 28th date would work. I know in the past, sometimes we've, we've encountered the signage, you know, as kind of a later date issue, and we've had our signage company come in and apply for whatever variances or, or in this case, exceptions we may need at a later date. We could do it, we could do it either way.
Well, typically, who cares what's typical? Since there's been testimony on it, you seem fairly well advanced in your planning. We have to have another public hearing anyway. I suggest, I'm going to set this for continued public hearing on the 28th of January at 6 o'clock.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, one, one second. Is it important now before I announce this?
Yeah, it is, because I don't feel we need for another public hearing. We've gone through two full public hearings on this. There are being, you know, everyone's hearing everything, great questions, we've got lots of material. I just don't think a need for another public hearing. Have them work it out and amend the situation and come back to us at our, at our decision meeting.
If there's amendment, well, first of all, I think we need another public hearing. you, you decide whether you're gonna amend with respect to the sign. It's our, it's our practice to grant this in accordance with a specific site plan. That site plan would show the location of the monument sign. That location, as the testimony has come tonight, does not conform to the ordinance according to your testimony. So I think you have to amend to ask for this exception.
If, if the county is in a position to leave it up to staff that they can get publication notice out in time for that January 28th meeting, we've got to come, we've got to come back anyhow, so we might as well do it, you know, at the January 28th meeting.
Okay, that's what, I got this note from the staff that it is required, and that January 28th is the date that's available. So now, before we close, I'd like, we have a public comment from a zoning expert who wishes to give testimony on this. That testimony has been presented by email, I think, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Haas to read that into the record, and then we'll close the hearing for this evening.
This is, this is public comment that was entered at the last hearing, but given that the chairman indicated that only the petitioner would present at the last hearing, all public comments that were sent, the email, would be read at this hearing. The email was sent for 12/10/2020. It's from Edgar Paul. His comments are, "Thank you for this opportunity to provide public comment. I appreciate that members of the public can provide comments through the online forum, and it shows the ZBA's commitment to transparency and accountability to the public. It is very important for the ZBA to provide ample opportunity for community members to participate in the public hearings. I was very concerned to see that on September 24, 2020, the ZBA completely prohibited any comments from members of the public. Further, during the public hearing on October 20, 2020, Chairman Carthel enforced rules that unreasonably restricted the public's right to provide public comment. I hope that the ZBA will review its rules further to ensure that incidents like these do not happen again. End of comment."
Well, we'll take that under consideration. Generally, the public comment comes after the presentation of the petitioner's case, which presumably facilitates the most informed public comment. But like I say, we'll take that under consideration. I do want to ask one more thing before we close. There is a paper in our packet called the Scottsdale Legacy, appears to do with lighting. Is this, when you're resolving your exhibits, tell us whether this is a part of your lighting exhibit. We have now the lighting plan from today, the photometrics plus this, so group them all together, if you would, or in sequence or something. Okay, I'll close for this evening. Thanks very much, everybody. I hope you were able, was everyone able to hear a little bit better tonight?
I was.
I heard really well.
Yeah, I heard.
Great, okay, we're closed. Thanks very much.
Thank you.